Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and we are resuming on our regular session meeting coming out of executive session. We're going to go ahead and move on to number three now, which is our public comment. Is there any public comment this evening?
There's not.
All right, no public comment, we'll go on to number four, which is our semi annual visitor and convention bureau presentation. It's Janice with here, you're welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Six months already.
Close, yeah, I was here in February, I think, so it goes by fast and this seat is like.
What is the picture you have here on our screen?
Yes, so we love this picture, I believe the mayor's husband might have taken this picture. So, thank you again, Mayor Ingle Canaan, city council members for allowing me to come and present our semi annual report. As of right now, our last fiscal year has not been closed out. It has to go through audit before we close it out, so we won't have that until late October. So I opted to show you the budget for this year. The first category, the carryover and rainy day fund, about a year and a half ago, the board of the VCB, the visitor and convention bureau, off opted to start putting away some of our lodging tax into a rainy day fund for the off chance that we came up short one year due to any number of issues, I mean COVID nineteen certainly opened our eyes to that. So as of right now, that fund has approximately eighty four thousand dollars in it. We put five percent of the lodging tax that we collect, just the lodging tax that comes to the VCB, for VCB related expenditures. We're going to put another fifty three or so thousand into it this year. Once we hit two hundred thousand, we'll stop putting money into it until the time when we have to use it and then we'll replenish. So that's part of that carryover, we also always very conservatively budget our carryover, although I anticipate we'll be closer to three hundred thousand on that carryover for the fiscal year we're moving into. We won't know until we get all of our funds in. So you can see from our total TLT revenues anticipated, this is from all four of our funding sources. We received money not only from the city of North Bend, but from the city of Coos Bay, the Coquell Indian Tribe and Coos County, but that's just for an area right around Charleston. So we're very pleased with the amount that we anticipate receiving this year. I can tell you that we received all of the funds from the last fiscal year and we had under budgeted North Bend last year. So we were pleased to have a little bit extra that came in from North Bend. That VIC income is for the Coos, city of Coos Bay provides to us in a separate agreement to run that Coos Bay Visitor Information Center. We also budget to do even in income to expenditures. And so our expenses are anticipated to be about one point four million dollars in the VCB side of things. That's about eight to nine hundred thousand just for marketing expenditures. The rest of it is our administrative costs for running, for doing what we do.
Can you just refresh my memory?
Yeah, sorry. Yes, Visitor and Convention Bureau is VCB, VIC is Visitor Information Center. Tourism in Coos Bay and North Bend and Charleston, we get these numbers independently from Dean Runyon Associates, which is the research firm that the state uses. In twenty twenty four, visitors spent one hundred and forty seven point three million dollars in our three communities. This was down slightly from twenty twenty three, but is still approximately forty percent of the Coos County visitor spending, which I'll show you in a second. This visitor spending supports about twenty one hundred jobs in our three communities. And that spending, of course, is for staying overnight, buying groceries, going out to dinner, and doing all of the recreational things that folks come here to do. For Coos County, visitors spent three hundred and thirty five point nine million dollars in twenty twenty four. That was a slight increase over twenty three. That visitor spending supports about thirty eight hundred jobs. And again, the funds are spent on overnight stays, dining out and going to the grocery store, as well as arts, entertainment, recreation and retail. So while I would like to say that the Visitor and Convention Bureau has influence on all one hundred and forty seven million dollars spent in our three communities, that is not the case. We actually anticipate or use a calculation of about fifteen percent of the money spent here is influenced by what we do. When you do the calculation, that means that for every dollar that the Visitor and Convention Bureau spends to market our area, we bring twenty six dollars back to our businesses and to our communities. It also includes some tax dollars that come in. So this is another beautiful photo of North Bend. So some advertising and marketing we've been doing, so you guys know that the Denver, the OTH to Denver flight went daily this year. We did a huge advertising campaign, we started it in April and we kind of concluded it at the end of August. In those months, we saw eleven thousand visits to a special page that we created just for the Coloradans. When they clicked on our, these were all digital ads, when we, when they clicked on our ads, they went to a special page. Beyond that page, they also went to other pages on our site, as you can see, on average, they went to one point two nine different pages and they spent more than a minute on our site. And we had a special link to United Airlines for people to book flights and we had three hundred and seven click throughs to United Airlines' site. This next part is kind of interesting, we did a comparison between Q three, which is January, February, March, and Q four, which is April, May, June, as to how many people from Denver visited our website. This is pre-advertising, post-advertising, because of course, we didn't advertise a lot in Denver, it's kind of expensive. And so you can see, we had about three hundred and thirty Denver visitors in that first, in that quarter three, and that jumped up to five thousand nine hundred and ninety one visitors in Q four. So that's a sixteen hundred percent increase, we were very pleased with.
Janice, you know, we're right in the middle of that Denver flight season through October, right?
Yes.
It's been reported that the flights are full.
Yes, so I, I actually took that flight a couple of times and my, my planes were completely full. And thank you for asking, because I did have some information. The airport is reporting increases in employments and de-employments, we're reporting a one hundred and seventy three percent increase in passengers on the Denver flights year over year, from two thousand nine hundred and twenty nine passengers on the twice weekly flights in twenty four to more than eight thousand passengers on the daily, and that was through the end of July, when they reported that to me. So there, and they're not just golfers, they're families and people coming in for business or going out of here for business. So some of our own residents taking those flights out as well. So we're very hopeful that that will continue next year, that they'll once again have them daily. We also started doing a little bit of advertising in the San Francisco market, because our Denver market advertising was so popular or so successful. So we'll see if, if we get any, any of those same kind of numbers out of San Francisco. San Francisco is even more expensive to advertise than, than Denver. So these are our plans for this coming year, we're promoting, of course, that extended vacation. We did this this past summer, calling it make a week of it, unpack once, explore all week, to help get people to think about coming here for longer than just two days. So that has been kind of that sweet spot for a lot of people, is a two night stay, so we're hoping to get them to three, four, even five nights. We're also talking about it as a bucket list destination, which is a kind of a buzzword in our industry right now. We're in the process of doing a new website and we're building on some of our cross promotional things, where we talk about an adventure and the people who provide the assets for it. So we talk about fishing and we talk about going out with a guide service, we talk about kayaking and where you can rent the kayak. So in other words, come, but you don't have to bring your gear, you can get it here. So those are some of the things that we're working on, again, those longer stays, painting a picture of all the wonderful things we have here. This is an example I wanted to share, we call it moving the needle. So when you advertise with Google, you can give them a pool of money and some assets. And Google kind of decides which assets are going to be seen by which people based on their algorithms. So we were finding that our big things, fishing, the dunes, whiskey run, some of those things, we're getting a lot of attention, that we're getting the majority of our funds. But we have so many other things, we have all these wonderful events and we have forest bathing and we have crabbing and clamming as well as fishing. And so what we started to do was take the money, instead of giving it as a lump sum, we said, this campaign gets this amount of money and this campaign, this campaign. And what that did was it, it actually moved the needle. So from February to March, we did a cultural thing where we were talking about our museums and our murals and all of the cultural things that we have here. And we saw a two thousand percent year over year increase in the number of visitors to that page on our website. In September of last year, we did the same thing with forest bathing. This was sort of new for us, but we were really pushing the get outside and just breathe. You don't have to have a destination in mind, you can just go walk in the forest or walk along the beach. And we saw a thirteen percent, a hundred percent increase year over year of people visiting that page. And even mountain biking, which is one of our big events, one of our big activities, December to January, we do a winter mountain biking campaign, especially in the center of the state, because Ben's trails are all under snow at this point. And we saw almost three hundred percent increase in visitors to that page year over year. So we know we're making some progress. This just gives you an idea of the kinds of things we advertise and at what time of year. So the, the things in, in kind of tan at the bottom, these are those Google buckets that we look at. But the other things are also in buckets, they just get a little bit different bucket of, of money throughout the year. So you can see our big events, you can also see our big campaigns, like the Fall Fifteen, our holiday happenings, the Make a Week, the Mountain Biking, Spring Break, that always comes up, and then of course, these Denver to OTH flights. And then I'll talk briefly about Holiday Lights, that is coming up crazy already. I can't believe it's already the end of September, as it is. So we have fully funded the buses again for this year, this is going to be year three of the Holiday Light shuttles. We got twenty three thousand dollars in committed funds to cover the cost of the buses. So these are the, the sponsors, their names will be on the side of the buses during the, the weekends. With the, again, this is Friday, Saturday, Sunday night shuttles plus the four holidays. So Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day and New Year's Eve, that we run the shuttles, yes.
So how was that then?
Yes, so the first year, we took a little over four thousand people from the Charleston Marina to Holiday Lights. Last year, we took forty four hundred people from the Marina to Holiday Lights, but there were significantly fewer nights. So if you're following the calendar, the longest Holiday Lights can be is thirty nine nights. The shortest it can be is thirty one nights, so when it's thirty nine nights, there's an extra weekend. And so we had an extra weekend the year before and we still brought more people last year than we did the year before. So we're, we'll have the same number of nights this year, nineteen of shuttle service. So we already have people talking about it and asking about it. We do also have people booking their parking, you can still park at Shore Acres, it is ten dollars now. They went up in January on parking at state parks, so that, that did increase. They have half the spots are out now, so you can book the night you want to go now. And then as we get closer to the start of Holiday Lights, seven days out, they do a rolling seven days where they release the other fifty or half, half the spots. So seven days from Thanksgiving, you want to, if you want to go on Thanksgiving night and it's sold out, that's the night, that's the day to look, seven days ahead. And this, it just rolls for every day.
And then you can pick up and it's not, you can still take the shuttle.
You can take the shuttle if it's a shuttle night, yes. Oh yeah, there's no reservation for the shuttle, no cost for the shuttle, that's why we got the sponsors, because we didn't want money changing hands in the Charleston Marina. There is also a place where you can stay and get warm. If, if it looks like it's going to be a little while before the bus comes, the Charleston Fishing Families opens their facility for cocoa and, and hot chocolate and coffee and things like that to wait, so. And then I recently did some new merchandise, which you will see at the North Bend Visitor Information Center, as well as the Coos Bay one, we did a whole new series of postcards that are getting a lot of attention. We love that North Bend, the sign, the, the welcome sign, just is a fantastic image. And of course, the boardwalk and we can't not have the bridge. So there's also things for Charleston and Coos Bay as well that you can pick up. And that's my report for this time. Any questions?
All right, thank you, always a pleasure.
Thank you, it's always a pleasure to be able to speak in front of you all and to share what's happening in my neck of the woods, as they say.
All right, that was our semi annual visitor and convention bureau presentation. We'll move on to number five on the agenda, which is our tsunami prepared presentation and discussion. We've got our back sheet coming on up.
Congratulations, number.
Did I say something?
We can talk about this, thank you.
I did, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I didn't miss anything.
Didn't want to.
I didn't know how to say it, just wanted to make sure you didn't forget that.
Yeah, tsunami, the non-going-forst. We've got our back sheet here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I tried that to.
Okay. Did that work?
No.
Yeah, that's real. Okay. So it's actually kind of an exciting thing to be able to present a little bit of tsunami awareness, you guys. I was looking back and I was privileged enough to be on the Jordan Cove project out there for their safety. And I look back and I have some documentation for tsunami back to two thousand seven, two thousand six. But I've been looking at tsunamis for that long, I've been, and it was a great privilege to be able to be involved in that, because it's pretty, pretty detailed out there and there's a lot of stuff going on. So we were able to gather a lot of information for that long. So I've been involved in tsunami world, I guess, for about that long. So it's, I'm not a geologist, don't ever want to be, but it, it's really interesting, some of the things that we do have. So there were some questions specifically brought up, so we'll just kind of look at some of those real quick. And then we'll have a time to talk a little bit, discuss questions and that kind of things as well. So let's look first at the one that I just handed out to you, the city's webpage. So what we've got on that is we just got some general information on there. And let's talk about first, the, actually, let's back up just a little bit. Let's talk about first, the one, first question is the tsunami ready program that we got through NOAA, the certification that we got for that. There's a neat, neat little letter in there, I put in there, but it's, it's really kind of interesting. You start going through the application process for that and it's a pretty in-depth application. And a lot of it's yes and no, have you done this? Yes, have you done this? Yes. And it's neat when we went through the entire thing, that we have really covered a lot of the information that they're really requiring. So we were able to get this recognition right off after we fill out the application. Some of the things that they look at, the signage, being sure that we do have a signage and that's something that we did years ago. Assembly areas, there, we do have those established and you can see that in our maps that we have. If you look at response education, so we go around and we put on programs at different places around. We went to schools, we've had public events at churches, we've had a lot of different education pieces out there for the public. And then we also have evacuation routes, which those are listed on this map as well. And so the main thing that we really want to push, and it was, it was great to be recognized for that, but it also gave us the opportunity to realize that we've got some, some more work to do as well and more opportunities. And that's great, because if you're, if you don't have those opportunities, you really go stagnant. And we, we've got still opportunities to improve on and filling out that application made us realize that there's a few areas that we can improve on. So that's, that's a great thing. The one thing that we just want to really talk about throughout this is be aware of your location. If you're in an inundation zone, go up to higher ground. If you're not in an inundation zone, shelter in place, stay where you're at, there's no reason to move and go anywhere. We had a, an event recently and a lot of people went up to the highest place in town, got their children and drove down into inundation zones and got trapped in that area and couldn't go because there was so much traffic. That, that just doesn't quite make a lot of sense. And, and I know the warnings that come in, they say, go to high ground, go to high ground, that's correct. But if you're on high ground, where are you going to go? You're already there. So we just need to really keep in mind, be aware of our surroundings. If we're in these areas that are already out of the inundation zone, you've done your job. So let's talk a little bit about distant tsunamis and local tsunamis. Our little back sheet that I passed out. So distant tsunamis, that's caused by an earthquake, it could be caused by a volcanic event, it could be caused by an underground slide, earth, earth slide that would happen, something to get the water moving. The nice thing about a distant event is we're going to have time to prepare for that, just by the name of it alone. Tsunamis can move very quickly, they can go three hundred miles an hour. But when we're talking a thousand miles, it's going to take a little while, so we're going to have some time. We're going to be able to, and, and they're typically not as large as the local tsunamis. The one thing with the local tsunamis, I'm kind of, wait a second. I put a timer on as soon as we started for five minutes and it's coming up here with ten seconds to go. Now, when a local tsunami or a local event happens on the Cascadia, that's our five minutes, I started, as soon as I started this talk, that's when I started, that's five minutes right there. That's how long it's predicted that this earthquake will last. So from the time I started talking until now, it's going to have a potentially nine point oh earthquake shaking us. So we always say, okay, yeah, we'll get a five minute earthquake, then we'll deal with that. Five minutes is a pretty long time, I don't think anybody in this room can hold their breath for five minutes. Five minutes is a long time and if it's shaking at that magnitude for that long, that's going to be our warning for a local tsunami. We're not going to be able to give out a warning, but I think anybody who can't figure out for five minutes, not being able to stand up, power poles going down, power lines going down, that's your notification at that point, that you need to be out of that inundation zone. So I, I just wanted to kind of give a little bit of a real, real life time, five minutes is a long time. And that's a five minute to seven minute timeframe, that's what they're looking at. Luckily, I was given an hour to speak here this evening, because I got so much information to give, so. Yes, so, so that's the one thing that I really want to push is distant tsunami and local tsunamis are something that are totally different. And when a local event does happen, be sure you're in the green. Protect yourself, wait until it's over, there's going to be surges that are going to continue to come in for quite some time, hours and hours. We just want to keep ourselves in the green, we want to take care of ourselves. And the biggest point for that is if you're in the green, stay in the green. So I kind of got through my five minutes there, but, so what I want to talk about as well is these advisories that we get, or these, these notifications. So if you look on our webpage, it actually goes through and mentions those. Informational statements, I know the city administrator and I were on a particular notification list, as I'm sure a lot of people are, that we get all these notifications, anytime there is an event that happens that could potentially produce a tsunami. And this information one just says something happened. Probably not real worked up about it, but it's, it's something has happened. Then you move along to the watch, something may have happened, but there, it just needs more confirmation. So just more, you know, be aware of something's happening. You move on to the next one, which is advisory, that one actually, something's probably potential there. There's going to be strong currents, there's not, probably not going to be a huge surge, but there's going to be currents that are going to happen. And widespread flooding is really not expected. But when you see the one that says warning, that's the one that, that is, something is happening. What they say tsunami is imminent or already occurring and immediate action is critical. And so be sure at that point that you are out of these zones that we're talking about. And you're in the green, but once again, I just want to just reiterate the entire time through. If we're in the green zones, that's where we need to go. We don't need to, to leave a green zone to go to another green zone. If you're in the green, you've accomplished your goal.
So even, so even when it's distant, they have a few hours, it still seems like you should just get to high ground and stay. It doesn't, it seems like you could be caught in traffic on the bridge as the tsunami is coming in, if it's, you know what I mean? What, or, or is there really a time period where you can say, okay, we can just leave, go.
Well, you just, just want to be aware of where you're at, know what's going on. And it's something that we gather through the tsunami information centers and that, and we're able to inform the public. It's nice to have four or five hours. I know when the, the big earthquake happened in two thousand eleven in Japan, we were sitting in the emergency operations center watching Hawaii on the TV. And we're thinking, well, if Hawaii goes away, we may pay a little attention here. But it was live and we actually saw that there was small surges that happened in Hawaii. So we realized that if Hawaii is still there, we're probably going to be in pretty good shape. But we still take them seriously and, and want to inform everyone of what's going on and, and keep out of those inundation zones. You can see in your maps, for a local, it's not near as, as, as much going on as the potential, I'm sorry, distant. Isn't near as much flooding as for, for a local.
Do you think that it's better that if you know you're in the green zone, to stay in the green zone so that the people need to maneuver around?
Absolutely, you're going to lessen the traffic out there.
For you to try to get to other people and really, yeah, stay in the green zone and then those yellow, those people, they don't need to be able to be safe potentially.
Yeah, you're, you're just going to cause more trouble and there's, you're not going to really benefit anything.
It's not a tsunami, but you know what the earthquake rating is for our dam?
The small to extra large to extra, extra large or which one of the?
The ones had the Coos Bay, North Bend Water Board, which would rush down, pouring creek and slough and so forth.
Yeah, they're, they're in excess of nine point two. And in doing, I, I've recently actually spoken with the water board and they've given us some documentation that they, they're geologists, which we have to take it, their word, is that it's not going to be just a massive boom, it's going to go away and there comes all this water flushing down. If, if it was to fail, it would fail and like, we were all kids, we, we built dams and had a good time with that. We know the way they work, pretty soon there's a little spot that starts going through and starts going through more and more and more. And then it kind of widens that out and continues on, that's how they predicted these would be. And there is two dams up at the, the water treatment facility and they don't foresee it as just a big huge rush, it's going, it would start out as a, as a smaller flow, increase to a certain amount and then come back down. And they, they perceive the maximum of that's going to be twenty five feet elevation gain, if there is that, the, the dam failure, as it were up there. And the, the high school is above that twenty five, the junior high is above that twenty five, Pony Village is still in that, but that twenty five foot elevation, that, yeah, they're, they're, have some challenges there. But the twenty five feet actually comes up right to the base of the parking lot and, and those areas there. The, that lower room or the lower area where the, the shop offices are at, that's, that's about that twenty five foot line.
You know, I see where it says like safety destinations, are those like buildings or trinkets or what makes London Dock a safety destination?
Those are areas that are just out of the inundation zone on maximum inundation. And the yellow is actually a thirty five foot zone, so that on.
Dot, is that like where you need to get to, where you need to get to, does it identify, is that where it's like, there's a sign that says?
There, there's not signs that are, are that, no.
Know that those are points of safety.
Yeah, that's where you get out of that inundation zone for maximum inundation. Another, another thing that plays a factor in all this too is. Um, another, another thing that plays a factor in all this too, is the actual tide that we have at the time this happens as well. Um, the last time that we had an, an event, it happened to be at low tide and it was right at low tide. So if the, if it's at low tide and something happens and you're, you gained three feet. And your tide is already low, well, you're going to be within your normal, your normal where you're, if, if it's. If it's a ten foot high tide and you gain two or three feet, okay, that's, that's more of a concern there. But it's something that, that we factor into these as well when we get these notifications. Um. Real quick, I want to real quick talk just real quickly about the. Kind of geology a little bit, tectonic pla- uh, plates, they're pretty cool. Um, we do have like the little, the little brothers here, the Wanda Fuka. That's like the small little fellow out here. That's the smallest one there is and that's just, um, you know, seventy five to a hundred miles off coast. And it's kind of cool, the size of that thing, and it's just a little fella. It's a ninety six thousand square miles. And it runs all the way up into British Columbia and then down in Northern California. That's the smallest plate. And it is uh, between thirty and forty three miles thick. So it's just like the little brother out there. But it just so happens, Big Brother just sits out there, the number one is the Pacific Plate. And that's the, that's the big one. And it, it moves and that's where the problem is coming. It's pushing around Little Brother and pushing him towards us. And it goes at about. Ten centimeters a year. So it's a slow move out there, but it is still moving and pushing it around. And just as a, as a footnote, uh, it's. Uh. Forty million square miles. Uh, is how big that plate is, the Pacific Plate. Forty million square miles and it's sixty two miles thick. So that little, poor little Wanda Fuka is just getting pushed all over. But the other drawback to it, it's getting pushed into the second biggest plate, which is a North American plate. So it's squeezed in between the two biggest plates going. And so that's the reason for our concern. That gets pushed in there and so it's gotta go somewhere. So over the years, that Wanda Fuka plate has went down underneath. Of the North American plate, which is just kind of. No, this is kind of stuff, I just, no, this is kind of cool stuff, though. Yeah, I'm just kind of nerding out, I guess, a little bit like my son-in-law would say. The North American plate, it's only uh, twenty nine million square miles, so it's not near as big. But it, that's Wanda Fuka plate is getting pushed underneath of that North American plate. And it's kind of just folding it down a little bit, folding it down. And so pretty soon, what's going to happen is every. There's thirteen events that these geologists say has happened. Um, with these plates coming together. And the last one happened in seventeen hundred, January twenty sixth, seventeen hundred. At nine o'clock in the evening.
You laugh.
I was a young fellow there and I just writing it all down. They say they found that out because Japan has some better records than what we do. And there was no one here to document that, but they did have a tsunami that approached their shore. And they did a little bit of cool stuff and they say that's what happened. Who's gonna argue with them because nobody was really around for it. That's the last major event and that's between a nine, eight point seven and nine point two is what they assume that that was. Um, the average comes in that about every three hundred to. Every three hundred to nine hundred years is when this has happened. Um, if our math is pretty quick, Larry, seventeen hundred to now. Little over three hundred? Yep, so we're, we're starting into that zone right now that it could happen. Um, but they've happened everywhere from two hundred and some years to. Nine hundred and some years. So with the average being about five seventy. So. Yeah, I mean, in geology, it could, it may not, but we need to be prepared. So. The reason that that actually is called a subduction one, it's actually going down under it. It's pulling that North American plate in there. And so pretty soon, there's gonna be enough pressure built up that it's finally just gonna say, I can't hold it anymore and it's gonna slip up. And so when it slips up, that's gonna displace that water and it's gonna push it up. And so that's only, like I said, seventy to a hundred miles off coast is where that Cascadia fault is. So it's gonna go tink and it'll bring in some, some waves to our area.
Do you think like the, the, the wonderful minds like you that are looking at this and analyzing all the time and the people that are like in the States? Do you, um. When it gets to that point, do you think that there will be like, fair enough warning where like, hey, some things have really shifted in the last year? Like, or is it gonna be such a surprise?
I'm gonna say surprise. But these, these geologists that are been to school for a long time and that. It's kind of like a weatherman though, isn't it? It's gonna be parts are clearing tomorrow. Okay, well, I was wrong, it rained a little bit. Um, they, they say that. They say that in the next fifty years, there's a ten to fifteen percent chance there will be a magnitude nine plus. That will happen on this Cascadia fault. So. And, and, and a thirty, and a thirty seven percent chance that there will be one that's eight point two.
Okay, so you're telling us how you were watching to see what happened in, from Japan into Hawaii. For your, your truth work. But at what point would we get, you know, where's the county? About the tsunami?
That's a terrific question. Um. I, no, I, I got a, I got calls from my family, but what's going on with this uh, this earthquake thing? And I go, I don't know. So my phone just didn't happen to go off, but the county had sent out a number of alerts as well, which. They're getting them from the state and, and uh, so. The county's wanting to make everyone as informed as possible. They're trying to send out this information. And truthfully, if you look at it, even in Oregon, we're listed as having between uh. Twenty six and sixty five thousand people that live in an inundation zone. Throughout the state of Oregon. So that's less than one percent of the population of our state. Is a state gonna put that much effort into less than one percent of their population? You look nationally, um. We push to really be able to get as much information as possible, but sometimes it's a challenge to get from the, the tsunami centers. Good information. We just go with the very best information we have and we're always gonna fault on the side of caution.
So, so, I don't know, probably have this discussion with our family. Has talked about, well, if we find out about one, would we, would we just go into front, say we knew it was hours away? It didn't sound to me like we would ever have that knowledge in that moment. No matter what kind of warning we get, we should just get to high ground and stay there.
Do you have to get to high ground if you're already there?
Right.
If you're already in, if you're in that high ground, you're sheltered in place and you stay there and you're doing what you need to do.
So I think that these things like the back of the tsunami back sheets are really good. Is this something that you have on your website? That you share out or how to, um, if people have never been to go back together before. Where is it good for purposes to show them where to go and maybe get that?
A terrific, a terrific thing for that is all these little maps that everybody should have one of these maps. We have thousands of them. We have thousands of them at the fire station. Um, and the cool thing about this map, if you look at it, yeah, it gives you all that neat stuff. But if you flip it over, there's actually a back to it. People don't realize, there's stuff on the back as well. And it gives you a great. It gives, gives you a great idea of your go kits. Right on the back, it says things to actually prepare and have ready. Things that you don't think about, uh, prescription drugs. You need to be sure you have some of those. Dog food, you need to take care of our pets as well, a lot of things on here, um, that are very, very uh. Important and it's, and it's good, we've got all those listed and uh, we will certainly put our little. Uh, we actually went to all the schools and passed out our little fact sheet there that you had. And we actually went and uh, and old counselor Schultz saw us up there. And we, we were uh, passing it out to all the students that we could, both. All the way through it.
You know, I heard everybody should take this really seriously and you know, I know that like the general rule is like a free day kit. I don't think it would hurt any of us to have a thirty day kit, maybe even a ninety day kit, just because we're so geol- geographically isolated here on the, on the coast.
Yeah.
And you know, you look at the list, there are easy things that people can put together, um, pretty quickly. Uh, people oftentimes like, you know, there was a lot of talk around after two thousand eleven, you started seeing like a lot when the tsunami happened in Japan. Like there were like kind of groups and you're always preparing congratulations by way on the tsunami readiness. Whatever the destination you had. I know you're thinking about it to the public, I think, based on it after there's an event. Like, oh, I better grab some case around the only at the, you know, Costco.
Yeah.
And then they don't think about it again. So that's like my kind of call it, I should show some stuff in a top orbit and have it ready. We need more than three days.
Yeah.
Surprised on a little bit that. Um, maybe it's just so far. When I look at the big map, uh, no bridges that are sort of subject to. Are, are marked. Like on the little tiny map we have in our packet, it says a bridge may fail, but it seems like the, the ones.
I, I will actually jump out a little further on that. If we have the large Cascadia event, all bridges will fail.
Right?
Just, it's, 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 don't, don't put gray, gray into it.
Yeah.
They're gonna fail. Because five minutes of shaking at that hard, it, it's, they are going to fail. So we're gonna have little islands all around. That's the reason that we prepared our fire station too. That's on one side of the island. Where Pony Village is at, that's, you're not gonna be able to cross that.
Yes.
We've got another one over here. We're, we're trying to separate out on, cover these islands as well as we can.
I appreciate you continuing to keep this in front of us because in when the. State was really into earthquake resiliency and preparedness and whatever year about ten years ago. And get their plans and put their things together. And the interesting thing about that plan, as you looked at it. Coast of Oregon was black. And that was take care of yourself for two months.
Oh, that's good.
So. These things of having doing and what we're gonna be doing and, and certainly access are, are the. Increasingly important. And I think the other, one other little thing was where they're gonna bring all the uh. Uh, all the equipment and so forth into is the Richmond Airport. Because seeing that the Eugene area and so forth would have its own issues, but so far as. All that planning going on, we were sort of take care of yourself. And uh, and it's responsible to do that and kind of by keeping it in front of us, like we can do that. The other thing I guess, the map that you've got here or the order. Can we order one or something? I like the fact that it has streets and things in it.
The, these maps are those same ones that are available.
Well, it's pretty darn small on the little handout.
Yeah. They're a little bit bigger. Um, there's also avenues that you can go. I don't know how tech savvy you are. But as you see on our website, uh, we can go and we can download, um, different, I have a, an app, uh. N V S tsunami, I think it's called. And you can actually, and it's this map that you can blow it up a lot. And really get a good look at it as well. But if something was to happen, a big event, there. You gotta have one of these hanging around too.
I thank you for your information. And I know that if we ever have any further questions or want to know, you'd be happy to like, let us come in and chat with you about.
Any, anytime. I know.
The national. League of recognizing that, like, that at all?
We'll get, we'll get there. But before I step, one thing we'd like to do is we'd like to come back. A few more times and actually talk, you know, we can talk about the emergency response a little bit, but then we'd like to come back and actually talk about. Um, what this council has done and then what your responsibilities would be in these events as well. And just kind of a little bit of an education for all of that as well. Just, just like, like uh, Councilor Slater said, just kind of keep it in front of you a little bit. And um, just, just maybe not as long as tonight, because I kind of started yapping a little bit. But you know, do a quick little, quick little blurbs and just at least keep it in your minds and the responsibilities that you will, you will have as well.
Okay, perfect. We appreciate you and you, you're part of our team. Well, that takes us to the review of the city council agenda for seventy number twenty third, maybe something else. We got. Nope, we did five, now we're on six. And so I'm gonna ask the city manager to walk through that I probably need to know over tonight.
Thank you, Governor. Now, so uh, we've got a couple of things on the consent uh, calendar. Uh, we have the August of twenty five, the House of Payable. Which is our check summary, our payroll registry and our House of Payable check registry. Um, and so it's only one item and so it is a consent calendar. But that's it. Um, if you want to take it off and vote on it separately, you can, but it's already. Um, there is a public hearing, so uh, everyone in the community has um, gotten notice. It's uh, actually uh, ran in the newspapers, been on our social media, the website. Uh, it's been in all the utility bills. Uh, but this is uh, basically the last hurdle. Uh, to get over our North Bend Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. So we're required by state law to have a public hearing. Um, and then it will behoove the council to consider ordinance number twenty eighty two. Um, so the public hearing goes first, followed by uh, your disserment on that adoption. Um, we've also provided you uh, all the confirming. Um, documents necessary. We've had our urban renewal, um. So do matter expert review. And so we are good to go. We've been able to check all the boxes and. And so uh, this is your last hurdle and then. Um, but uh, the city of North Bend is one of the contributing large districts. Um, so that's why you get a vote uh, to then authorize a plan amendment for the urban renewal agency. So. Any question at all there?
No.
We all sort of kind of started the process, so.
Time for questions. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just, I was hoping to get a quick walkthrough of the map of the urban renewals. Cause when I was looking at maybe land use plan, there was a lot of strikeouts, but the types of zones weren't. Hurricane, so I assumed there's, it's a piece of money.
There's no change to the existing map with the exception of the North Bend School District under the prior administration. And excluded specifically by request, the school district's main building.
Okay.
When we presented um, round two, uh, we gave them an opportunity to have them put back in. Um, I explicitly said that it's in your best interest to be in the urban renewal agency. Um, and uh, no action was taken. Um, and so the plan amendment will move forward. Um, with the building excluded. So that is the only change to the map.
It looks like you're, it looks like you're simplifying the document, just changing the zones. Um, is that just because you can get that preference elsewhere or?
The actual document has the published map data. Yes, and the uh, actual documents, the controlling document.
And it doesn't really matter then what. Type of zoning it has per se.
Um, actually, as part of the urban renewal district, we actually are required to lay out the types of zoning that are. Yeah, and so that's part of the plan amendment. And so we're just redressing because zoning can change over time.
Right.
And so in order to make sure that we're meeting uh, state law, um, we uh, review all of the parcels. That are over there and then we'll zone for those parcels, um, so that uh, there's an appropriate max.
Okay, so, okay, so then, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand the document here. Um, so when you get to general description of land use, you're basically just gonna have a bulleted list of zone names.
That's correct. It's the actual map then, and the actual parcels within the map are the controlling document. Um, zoning is not the purview of the.
Yes.
Um, of the urban renewal agency that's actually vested powers by the city of North Bend. Through its planning commission. And so uh, zoning can change over time. And so when you do a plan amendment, we have to revise and refresh. Um, and be reflective of all zoning within the district.
Thank you.
So we have the titles for these and then you go to the land use plan to come up with the. Allowed whatever uses were. So the, the actual uh, controlling document for plan use of planning.
Will call back to the city when it's actual official adopted zoning map. Okay, we're simply outlining the parcels and giving you a characterization of the types of zoning that are within your district. But the U R A is not controlled zoning, nor has any effect on this.
All right. What else?
All right, um, you then will go up to number seven. This is a memorandum of agreement. Uh, for me fully an emergency response between the United States Coast Guard and North Bend Police Department. Um basically it lays out that if we call them or they call us, um here's what will we do. Um in here, we are, uh we had received um some. Uh Lovendauer, um not his law, but uh feedback from our city attorney. And so you'll notice in the um the way the uh motion is written. Um that says that the city attorney has final say on final form, um so we were given a. A memorandum of understanding and we moved it forward. And so uh there was uh one little tweet uh suggestion that our city attorney is the past. Um that we go back to the Coast Guard and um uh ask to uh be changed. It's a non-consequential um city attorney's here if he wants to chime in. Um however, because it's a memorandum of understanding, then they request that the uh chief um. Uh elected official of the city sign it, um that the who to all to. Um authorize your mayor to sign the document from one government to another.
Have we done this before?
Um I'm not aware if we have or not, um uh there's new uh uh C O command staff over there. And it's a much more cooperative staff and so we are uh working um very nicely with one another. Um and um are sharing resources, feedback and guidance and so. Um let's just say it's a new day in North Bend uh and a bright light with the uh Coast Guard.
So what is it, what is it like, just cause we're on this, what is it like when? A police. Group reaches out masks for cold.
Well, with respect to the Coast Guard, they don't have law enforcement authority locally and so we are the law enforcement. Um a sworn officer uh here um has statewide um authority uh with the badge. And so um being that they are in our city, if they call for law enforcement. Um we're on Coast Guard property and also although it's federal property, um they don't have federal law enforcement. Exactly, and same thing is a mutual, if we request services, which we do uh most often. Um through uh the fire department general, um but if we need um uh mutual aid assistance. Um that they'll reciprocate, um so yes, so um they're asking uh for uh. An agreement while we're on um uh federal land, um that we have an agreement in place um to carry out um our local duties. Think I did you have anything else to do like that?
I'll make it really quick, but um the only thing I would add to that is this in the past when we didn't have our agreement. And we were called over there, um it really delayed our response to uh responding to the incident because they had to make a lot of phone calls. Going up their chain of command to get approval for us to come on the property being armed. So uh this this will uh negate that to where we're just able to go on there. It also uh opens up the opportunity for us to use it as um some training going in there and helping them as well too, so.
So mutually, so we have agreements like this. Uh for their presumed agreements, like the. Ask for mutual aid, are those all things that would be an agreement like this or are those things where there's already a?
This does this does have presumed um agreement and this this one's more so for um them to allow us to be able to come on. Otherwise, we we show up and we had to wait at the gate um for them to make some phone calls when their. An ordinary guy said, hey, there's somebody in here that shouldn't be in here and. It's just really.
So so most of the city and county, they're they're presumed.
Instead of um uh aside from say the county sheriffs, they have different, you know, curfew duties, but. Um the badge is badge and so it's you uh enforcement per state law anywhere in the state of Oregon. And um as the captain said, uh we're going on federal property, um and so this way uh. Uh we have um a right of access and and understood and so it's um. Uh it's great, it's the first time in my five years that um we've gotten this far, so this is actually um a great thing. Great, last one, um this is authorization to apply for business organs, housing infrastructure support uh fund. Um this is a request uh seeking a hundred thousand dollars under um the Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven. Um set aside money and then that hundred thousand would be for technical assistance and professional services specific to the annex. Um they uh request um, um and so I'm, although I have the authority to sign it. Um uh they have verbiage in the application. Um uh for instance, like if a mayor were to sign it, they actually want. Uh the state office signs and has authorization signed it. And so sure, giving them our city charter, it felt better that we just simply get memorialized. Um in minutes and be done with it and submitted as a package at the end of the month, um if the council is. Um acceptable on us trying to obtain those funds.
Yep. It's authorization, so it's like the grand, it's important, yeah, what do you feel you're gonna use it on the the other?
Specifically on the. It shows a equal work plan, um and so it's um technical assistance so that we can. Further everything that we need and get every dot um. He's crossed, I dotted. Um the four billion actually has money set aside for specific uses and so um uh uh. We're using the four million as leverage to um uh show support and uh J state dollars.
Yeah, great, shout out.
Okay, pretty easy packet tomorrow night, you know, it's gonna be on the Ohio.
Yes, and we're not expecting any um action out of effective session.
Okay.
And no other business.
Into that, into our work session, that's the last time we had more business and we'll go ahead and say.